For July 20, 2009, it's for the purpose of hearing persons interested or their agents or attorneys regarding the intent of the city to replace portions of curb and gutter, and assess property owners on 11th Street that are involved in the 11th Street Improvements Project. A copy of the report, which indicates the nature and amount of the improvements proposed to be levied, is on file in the office of the City Clerk, 505 Third Street Hudson, available for inspection. We've got the list before us who we're levying. There are about 10, I believe. Any member of the public here would like to be heard on this? Yes, sir. Stand up to the podium if you would, and give us your name and address, and take it away.
My name is Greg Crusoe. I own the property on 1108, or excuse me, 110th Street. I guess my question is, is I was assessed on the full frontage of my property. Looking at there, I'm not an engineer, but looking at that, I guess I question the whole assessment on the whole frontage of my property. Usually, I think, as you all know, when you're buying something at the tune of $1,400, which would be my cost, I guess I would like a better understanding of why, and why my whole sidewalk needs to be replaced. It doesn't bring up any of my property value whatsoever.
Mm-hmm.
If it's a road issue, I'm not responsible for replacing a road. So I guess what I'm asking is, is more or less, somebody to show me, you know, why I'm assessed this, and what the reasoning is behind it, and possibly if it all needs to be replaced, or if some of it needs to be replaced. And I guess that's really all I have to say right now.
Okay, thank you. And we will be taking this up during the council meeting under New Business, and we'll have discussion then. Can you stay for that?
No, I'm sorry.
Could you stay for...
Later in the...
Later in the meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Chuck, do you have anything to say?
When we decided to re-check, you know, redo the 11th Street project this year, we just decided to do minimal work on curb and gutter. Chuck and I and Sandy actually looked at the areas that we have on the assessment roll, and just decided and thought as a group that those areas needed repair. The idea of this project is to do minimal work so we can keep this total reconstruction maybe in eight to 10 years. The street, you know, do a total reconstruction eight to 10 years. The areas that we marked, I felt, and Chuck and Sandy felt, that the curb and gutter in these sections that we marked won't make it eight to 10 years. I think Randy visited the area today. I looked at it again today, and on the northern section of Mr. Crusoe's property is extremely eaten away, and the road base has actually sunk down about this far before the curb and gutter. Just integrity, if we don't fix it, the integrity of the road isn't going to make it eight to 10 years. We'll be lucky if we get three to five years before we're patching, repairing, and then we destroyed the, our road structure. So the areas that we marked, we felt needed to be done. I understand it's a lot of money, and, but it's an area that we felt needed to be done. There's probably a small section mid-property that's questionable, and then there's, on your southern area down by your driveway, it's actually eroded on both sides of the gutter, like in the street side and then on your apron side. And, you know, then the gutter's only about that narrow at that point. We just felt that it needed to be replaced. And the safety issue, too. It's such a dip there, and it's just gonna keep eroding. We have, a few years ago, I don't care to do it, I don't know, overlaid the entire gutter. The problem with that is, is that you lose half of your gutter, and when it rains hard, then we have issues with water jumping over the gutter into the property, onto the median or shoulders, or the boulevard, I should say. So I don't, I'm not in favor of overlaying the gutter line either.
Yeah. We really agree that these are the areas that need to be addressed as far as integrity of the road, as well as safety. I went through it once, had some other areas, but then revisited it, and these are the areas we felt were the most important.
Okay. Anyone else here who'd like to be heard on this issue tonight? Yes, sir?
Say one more thing.
Yep, go ahead. Stand up there.
I guess my question is, is if this is going to be all replaced in eight to 10 years, are all the gutters and everybody going to be reassessed in eight to 10 years when the new road goes in? Or am I, or people that aren't here that were assessed on this, just responsible for the temporary patch? And then when you put in new, are you putting in all new gutters? Are you putting in all new curbs? I can't imagine you're going to put in a whole new road with all brand-new. And then my question would be, if that's the case, if you assess me now, I'm like, well, nobody can guarantee, but am I going to get assessed again in eight to 10 years? Which doesn't make sense to me. If this is a patch situation, this is not permanent, and as I said before, $1,400 and change, or whatever, is a lot of money to me for a patch situation for a number of years, when you're going to come back and replace the whole road. So I guess that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? There's a motion to close.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? All right. Public hearing is closed. Let's call to order the regular meeting of the common council of the City of Hudson, Monday, July 20. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. If you'd please rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Knudsen?
Here.
District One, Morsette?
Here.
District Two, Brokaw?
Here.
District Three, Bernard?
Here.
District Four, Wyland?
Here.
District Five, O'Malley?
Here.
District Six, Virchell?
At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Anyone who's here who'd like to address the council about any item or issue that is not on tonight's agenda, but might come before the council at a future meeting, or have an impact on the City of Hudson, this is your chance to come and speak. If anyone here would like to address the council? Anyone like to speak tonight? You look like you're getting ready to go up there. No? All right. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We read those items, please.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of July 6, 2009, and the closed session minutes of May 4, 2009, and July 6, 2009. To approve the claims per payment in the amount of $499,373.79. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of an amusement device operator's license to William Letherd, doing business as Andoda Valley Amusement, Maple Grove, Minnesota, and amusement device permits for the 12 machines located in the Applebee's, Buffalo Wild Wings, and Green Mill Restaurants in Hudson. To approve the creation of a veteran fire department roster for the experienced, less active firefighters. To place on file the quarterly reports of the fire chief, the building inspector, and the public utility commission minutes of July 14, 2009. That is all.
Thank you. Any changes to the list? Go for approval. The motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote?
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
And that's six to zero, and the consent agenda items are approved. Without any objection, maybe, would you like to move to New Business first, since we've got someone here waiting for that?
We've got to approve the bid first.
We've got to approve the bid first.
Which we could do.
We could do number...
We'd have to approve the bid before they approve the resolution, correct? Because the resolution includes approval of the bid.
Oh, yeah. That's all the waters involved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. All right. So what I'm suggesting is we'd skip to number six on finance first, and that is to review the bids and consider awarding the contract for 11th Street Improvements Project. Finance committee recommended that we approve the staff report, staff recommendation, which is that, that we would approve the low bidder Pember Construction in the amount of $416,569.84, contingent on approval of the water utility improvements. If they don't approve, which they'll have to have a meeting later this week, because the bid is a little bit higher than what they had pre-approved, if they reject the bid, then Finance recommends that we would rebid the project without the water system improvements, and the council would consider award of the revised bids at the August 17 meeting. There's a motion and a second on the staff recommendation.
And just to be clear, you'd reject all these bids?
We would reject all bids if water isn't going in with us. Water actually has the majority of this project now.
Can, can I get a clarification on this? Are you including Mount Crye in this?
That is the alternate one.
So that's a, it will be done with this?
Yes.
Okay. And the second thing, I'd like to re, I'd like to agree with Al, but for the purpose of keeping this on a timely fashion, I'm going to agree to go ahead and vote in favor of this bid. I'm not, I don't think Pember is our best company to go with. I think they screwed that project up on the three left turn up on Carmichael, and I would agree with you, Al, but because of time and school, I want to see this, and that road is bad. It needs to get done. I'm in favor of voting for it.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion?
As I said, in Finance, I'll be voting against it. I think the performance of the last project they had with us outside of the, outside of the sidewalks, I think the sidewalks are completely different than road construction, and probably more complex. I think the response and the, I just, I think until I receive something, or that things have changed, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do business with them. So I'll be voting no.
Other comments?
I can agree with Al. In my time on, on the Public Works Committee, I've had a lot of experience with this company. I will not be voting for their award.
Just to clarify, for those of you that might be considering voting no on this, because you don't wish to award to the low bidder, we will need to document or include a reason for not awarding to the low bidder. I know in Al's case, there were many project delays on the triple F turn lane at Carmichael and Crestview Drive that involved the sign, the erection, fabrication of the sign took months longer than we thought, or would probably should have. I believe in the fall, I wasn't on the council then, but I believe in the fall, the striping that was supposed to have happened didn't happen right, or some, there was some delay then. I can't remember exactly what it was. It led to some disappointment in that contractor, but I would say that, you know, they want to do business in Hudson, they want to do business in the city. They very aggressively bid on the sidewalk project last year, and said to us that we'd like the chance to kind of redeem ourselves, and we did give them the low bid, and I think they performed very satisfactorily. And, you know, maybe no one tries harder than someone who's trying to get back in your good graces, so there's that. But there is no doubt that we were disappointed with the, with the time involved in getting that triple F done.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Chuck, can I ask you a question about that project? What was the scope of that project? The triple F turn lane was a piece of it, but what was the overall scope? Uh, let's see. We modified some of the medians, a little bit of storm sewer work, and the approaches loops. The primary piece was the overhead sign.
There's plenty of blame for that project to go along, and I think I made my point very clear at the time with your engineering firm, that I wasn't happy with how things In all fairness to Pember, there's a lot to be spread.
I would like to point out that the difference in price between first and second bid is minimal.
The city's component is $8,000. The water's component is about 11, $10,000 to $11,000. Discussion for many of you who haven't weighed in?
Well, I guess I'd be curious to hear from Scott what some of the problems in the past have been, because I would agree with Randy that the triple F hand turn situation, it was not just a Pember issue, but if you'd care to elaborate if that's permissible?
Well, I'm going to heed what Catherine said, but I will comment on the, the triple F left turn lane project was, the biggest culprit there was the overhead sign, and the manufacturer had certainly some culpability there in delivering a sign which was based, did not fit the specs that they were given. So we couldn't direct it, so we had to start all over again, so that delayed it even further. And I'm not laying that at Pember's doorstep at all. But as Catherine pointed out, if we do vote no, we're going to have to document that carefully. So I'm going to defer comment to writing later on in conference with Chuck, because Chuck's got all the records on it, and I do not.
Okay. I just, I'm looking for a little more.
I'll give you, I'll give you a couple examples that I experienced trying to make a telephone call to get a response from them on when it's going to be done. I couldn't get a call back. And to me, that's just not acceptable. Called the president of the company, called the vice president of the company, and it got bounced around. No one would talk to me. And, you know, if I'm trying to sell something, or trying to do a project, I think you'd call them back and say, here's what we're having problems with. And maybe it wasn't my responsibility, but I was so frustrated at the amount of time that it took to get this thing done, that's why I made the phone call, because we couldn't get anything done. I mean, every month that went by, it was, well, we have to remanufacture, we, you know, there was just never, in my opinion, never a good answer. I mean, I think delays are expected, communication should be expected, and I don't think we had any, or at least to my satisfaction.
I think one of the concerns is, we're right up against the wall with school, the start of school, and we talked about the importance of having this done as close to the start of school as possible, and if we've got concerns about delays, and Chuck, do you have any idea or commitment on, on meeting the deadline that's established, or I guess who's, who's had the conversations with Pember, and the, their desire to ensure our satisfaction with this project?
Project timeline?
You know, they're well-intentioned in a contract. The substantial completion date, I believe, was October 9.
So if they don't hit it, then what? Is there, do we penalize them, or is there, do we assess a penalty?
Yes, there are liquidated damages in the contract if you choose to go after them. So there is that component. And I think one of the, the triple F turn items is, you know, that kind of a stand on top and getting that kind of established deadline, when, when there was some manufacturing components, and we knew that those deadlines weren't going to be completed. At that point, we really should have done a change order to agree upon deadline.
So we're willing to, it sounds like we're willing to look at option two if we document our objection to the low bid?
No, option two is if the water commission does not...
Number, I mean, number two, the second lowest.
Oh, you're looking at the actual...
Well, I think you're right, Randy, that not going with the staff recommendation doesn't stop everything in its tracks tonight. We simply would vote on another bidder.
Yeah.
The, as you pointed out before, the triple F turn lane issue, it's really hard to hang that hole on one particular contractor, when the rest of the project was done, and was done successfully, correct? Chuck, you were happy with the work that was done on the rest of that project?
Yeah.
I think that there's a lot to hang on. One issue that had a lot of people, a lot of people, a lot of input into that not being completed on time.
Our budget was within option...
178.5 was the total budget, including engineering for the city portion, I believe.
So we budgeted for, we could accept bid two?
Well, you could accept bid two, but that's $8,000 that we could spend on something Actually, $19,000 citywide.
I guess in light of the fact that we've done work with them since.
Well, it doesn't grow on trees, you know.
Where's our money tree? They cut it down on Third Street.
But we have done work with Pember since.
Before and since.
Before and since. I mean, I guess I agree with Dean from the standpoint that 8,000 or 19,000 may not sound like a lot of money right now, but something tells me in two months, when we're sitting here looking at the budget, it's going to sound like a lot of money. So I would be in favor of giving them a chance, and I will support the low bid. In fact, I'll make a motion if we don't have one. Do we have one?
We have a motion by Lee, and I believe was seconded by...
I seconded the motion.
Scott. And is there any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I think it's four to two, with O'Malley and Virchell voting no. All right. Then, to move things along on that item, we've got Resolution 12-09, which is our final resolution authorizing the 2009 11th Street Improvements Project special assessments. Now, it's the policy of the city that if your curb and gutter needs to be replaced, that it would be 50% assessed, and to the, to the adjacent property owner. If it's $500 or less, you have one year to pay. If you make deferred payments at a, you get, you pay an interest rate of 2% above the cost of whatever the city borrows funds from, for, which is about 3 or 4%. And so if it's between $501 and $1,000, you can take two years to pay. If it's over $1,000, you can take three years to pay. We did hold a public hearing a few minutes ago, and we heard from Mr. Crusoe, who's here now, and he questioned two things. One was whether the entire width of his property really needed to be replaced, and I think it was 77 feet. And you heard the staff give their reasons why they thought that, in their judgment, it did need to be replaced. His second point was that, a concern that if this road needs a complete reconstruct in a few years, and am I, is he going to be reassessed then if the curb and gutter has to be taken out in order to accomplish that? Now, at this point, we have inspected and evaluated the base of that road, and the base is sound and solid. The purpose of the curb and gutter and the road surface is really to protect the base. Soon as there are large cracks or erosions there that let water get underneath the curb and gutter and under the road surface, then it's going to start eroding the base, and then the whole road goes to pieces. So right now, all we need to do is overlay, redo the pavement. If we do the pavement and don't do the curb right, then water still gets underneath. And it's not fun. We've looked pretty hard at this project, trying not to assess anybody for work that really doesn't need to be done. And that was the direction from the council earlier. We talked about, you know, what if the fire, pardon me, what if the water utility required new hydrants, and that required cutting curb and gutter, then is it really fair that the resident have to pay for that one? Maybe there was perfectly good curb and gutter there. But I don't think that's the case for Mr. Crusoe's. Is it, or is it not?
There's not the case.
It's, it's just deteriorated curb and gutter? Council have any comments?
I think an answer to, that's a good question. In 10 years, eight to 10 years, is he going to be reassessed? If they take out that, or is he, is that chunk of 77 feet skipped over?
Is that...
Whoever can answer it.
I believe the assessment policy, yes, that would be the case, that it would be reassessed if it was ripped out and done.
Well, if it was done, why would you rip it out? Unless you had to do it.
Well, what's the likelihood that you'd have to do it? I mean, if you're going to do a total curb-to-curb rebuild, do you tear everything out, right, Tom?
Possibly. If the grade would change, you'd have to, yeah.
Okay. So we don't know whether they...
No.
We don't know.
And we, we tried to focus on patches that were small length that were long, you know, more linear and longer. I think, if I recall, this 77 feet was a part of a 150-foot, and we're all saying, we want to hope that we can save that 150 feet.
But once again, the components of a road system are the base, you've got the water main that's in there, and you've got the sewer, right, and then the curb and gutter. Right now, we looked at the base, the base is sound. We looked at the sewer, and the sewer has been televised, and the sewer is good. It won't need to be dug up to be replaced. Jim Schreiber told us that it would be more efficient to actually put in the kind of poly, whatever, that pipe, pipeliner in there, if, if that needs some work. So that wouldn't be a reason to tear it up either. So really, right now, we're, this isn't like a Band-Aid. I mean, we've assessed that road, we've taken time to let the water, you heard the discussion, the water's going to do $325,000 worth of work there, at the same time that we're doing the millon overlay. So at that point, we'll have sound water pipe in there, we believe we've got sound sewer in there, and right now, we've got a sound base. If we do this right, it isn't a done deal, rock-solid certain that this needs a rebuild in eight years. When I heard you say that, my, one of my reactions was say, well, that sounds like we have a plan that we're going to do a rebuild in eight years. That's, that's not the case. But a paving surface is only expected to last eight to 10 years. So eight to 10 years from now, any street, at any time, you can expect that your curb and gutter is going to get reassessed within eight to 10 years. Not reassessed, that was the wrong word. Re-evaluate it. I misspoke. Re-evaluate it within eight to 10 years, and if the curb is all bad at the time they're going to pave, then it would, there's no reason that I would see that we would necessarily be doing a total rebuild on that thing in eight years. Because honestly, if we were, I'd be questioning right now why we're doing what we're doing. We're putting quite a bit of money into it if we're only that many years away. I don't know. Council, what do you say?
Move to suspend the rules?
Got it. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Morsette?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero, and the rules are suspended towards adoption of Resolution 12-09.
So moved.
And there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, to approve Resolution 1209. Discussion?
I think an important point, what was the number they gave us as ever road bid? A road bid that has one or two cracks, and it is typically 15 years old, and that's, that's your typical rebuild on a, on a tar road surface, wasn't it?
Millon overlay, yeah.
Right. And so anything that's got heavier traffic is going to be built, have, need more maintenance earlier.
11th Street is very, very heavily trafficked.
I think that's important to note, that the eight or 10 years, based, based on the, how heavily trafficked it is, and what its current condition is, and whether or not another millon overlay will work again, then you're looking at what, what curb and gutter needs to be touched at that time, if they do another millon overlay.
If it's okay with Tom Zulley, I'll just summarize some of our experience in the past. We have to make a choice in the future when we do any work on any road... We have to make a choice in the future, when we do any work on any road, as to how deep we're going to mill down and how much we're going to put back. And that will change possibly the grade of the road, how high the surface is above the base. I'm sure that Tom and his crew will take that into consideration, along with Chuck, when the time comes, and we don't know when that time is, that Eleventh Street will be considered for a complete mill and overlay project and, and taking up of what we have there, down to the base and building it back up again. So there is no reason to believe that the curb and gutter going in Mr. Crusoe's front of his property today is necessarily going to be outdated sometime in the future.
Comments? I'll point out that we have roads in the city that have gone thirty, forty years without a total rebuild, correct? There's probably some that have gone fifty years. Just depends if that base stays good and the pipes that are in there are serving us, there's no point that you necessarily dig it all up and put a whole new road in there. And also, there's been some discussion of Wisconsin Street coming up on the list for next year. Since I'm the only one that was here, the last time we tried to do Wisconsin Street and then had all the people that were facing large, much larger than this, special assessments come. Just remember tonight, as we start talking about that, it's hard to do what's right for the city when you have to sit and look at someone who's getting a big bill and we wouldn't like it any more than you, but it is what's right for that road. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion passes. Resolution twelve dash oh nine is adopted. And we will go back to the Finance Committee, item number three, which is applications for operators licenses. On this item, we broke into two parts. The first part is to approve a list as recommended by the staff for operators licenses. And those people are Scott Feit, Tranquilino Fuentes, Kristen Hertel, Jessica Harrington, Robin Heskett, Aaron Hunt, Ian Johnson, Elizabeth Lampert, Holly Webb, and Danielle Weeks.
Prove for approval.
I have a motion.
I'd like to recuse myself, Mr. Moore.
Approve, and Mr. Morissette is recused.
I'll second.
And there's a second to the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those licenses be approved for the period from July twenty-first to June thirtieth. July twenty-first tomorrow until June thirtieth, two thousand and eleven. And then, the Finance Committee recommended denial of an operator's license to Paul Brozek, eleven-ten Second Street, as recommended by Police Chief Jensen, based on the history of prior convictions and charges pending.
Move for.
For violations of laws regarding alcoholic beverages.
Move for denial.
There's a motion to deny.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll deny that license. The next is to approve the special event permit for the Gopher to Badger Race Event as recommended by staff with the contingency or consideration that all their signage should be picked up at the completion of the event. And also, to approve reduction in their insurance liability, pardon me, liability insurance from three million to two million.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That's a good event, hope they're successful again. Finance Officer's Monthly Report, the Finance Committee reviewed with Betty and recommended placing it on file. Anyone have any questions for Betty on her report? She's here tonight. If not, we will place it on file.
The only thing I brought up in finance, and I want to bring it up here again, is the, that ambulance fund was, the work is still being done to reconcile the books, the old carrier to new carrier.
Yes. So we've had some cash flow lag in the switch there. That brings us, we did number six already, that brings us to number seven. Number seven, we are recommending, the Finance Committee recommends appointment of David Gray to be our Building Inspector slash Assistant Zoning Inspector, effective August first, two thousand and nine, at a salary of fifty-eight thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
An excellent choice.
An excellent choice, he is.
Absolutely.
We're lucky to have him. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries and we'll talk with David and see if he's willing to accept that. And we hope so.
Thanks, Counsel. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That takes us to number eight. Number eight was on consent. Update on projects. Mr. Schwartz, give us your update, please. We're not used to getting, getting to you by seven-thirty.
Yes.
Get you unaware.
You caught me off guard, I admit. Just a couple of items. Carmichael Road, the paving, we, we expect the paving to be complete by the end of the week. And also, early next week, we expect to have a pre-construction meeting for the two thousand and nine road improvements, so we can get going on that project. So you should see some activity prior to your next council meeting, as far as the crack sealing, the CO coating and, and all of that work. Other than that, I don't know if there's any questions for me. Tower Road, they are putting the water main in, and that'll last another month or so. That's out at the Business Park, water main extension out there. And there's also some activity in Heritage Boulevard. They'll be pouring curb and gutter and likely paving next week. Any questions?
Any questions for Chuck? Carmichael is going smoothly so far. I like that they did the night work. I think they got the worst of it done with about as little disruption to traffic as we could for that busy intersection. So, thank you. And I think you better stay, because we have one more item for you. All right, so we did, under New Business, we did our Resolution twelve oh nine, so that takes us to B. B is consider request of Public Safety Committee to draft language changes to Municipal Code Chapter one eighty-seven dash nineteen D three regarding sex offender residency restriction exceptions. This would be ordinance number ten dash oh nine. It came as a public safety recommendation. I said I didn't think we necessarily needed Catherine to draft it, but we could bring it forward. If you'd like, I can refer this back to the Public Safety Committee for them to look at the language that we came up with. That would be option A. Option B would be to have first reading. Option C would be to suspend the rules and adopt it. I bet Catherine has a favorite of those three.
Well, the only comment I have or thought on this is that I know in some school districts there are program, high school programs for adults who are not, I mean adults meaning over eighteen, who are not living with their parents. I think the idea behind this was to allow for, you know, the situations where someone over eighteen hasn't, but regularly enrolled in the regular program, high school program and living with his parents or her parents, the residency restriction wouldn't apply. So I, I think you want language regarding that in the ordinance. I think that was the intent.
Well, actually, may I?
Yes.
The intent was to cover individuals who are under eighteen, living with parents and/or still attending high school. But we had further discussion about covering individuals who are still living at home and full-time students, either in a technical school or university.
Because if you read our recommendation here, it, the line, let's see, how did we write it up? Full-time students as defined by the school are actively pursuing schooling and living with their parents. Was our, was what came out of our committee.
Well, and so back to my items, A, B, and C. If you'd like this to be referred back to your committee, then Catherine could give you input and you can have it back at the committee. So we just simply read the title and refer it, and I don't think it takes any action. If someone wishes to make a motion towards adoption of it now, you could certainly do that, it's on the agenda for that. All right, hearing none, then I'll send it to committee, Public Safety Committee, can I have it back?
Do you need a motion to do that?
I don't think so. If you want, you can.
You might as well, because it's in the minutes as to what happened with this ordinance.
Would you make a motion to send it to Public Safety?
I'm going to go back to, I make a motion, we send it back to Public Safety to review our recommendation and to update the language to match that.
I'll second.
Second.
Second. Discussion on the motion?
You're sending us stuff at the Public Safety Committee?
Well, I can send, yeah, I can just either, who is the Chair of Public Safety? I can talk with the Chair afterwards as to my concerns about the committee recommendation as well.
Yeah, I have some concerns about that too.
Yeah.
It's, I think you have to remember, a convicted sex offender who happens to still be staying in college may still be the exact person that we may not want living right next to an elementary school. And I don't care whether their parents are okay with it or not, we might not be.
Yeah, and he may not be under typical type of control that a parent typically has over.
We may also wish to define school.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Because there are different kinds of schools.
Well, in my draft, it simply says high school and I thought that was already wide enough, because it's not just Hudson High, it could be another high school if they'd been evicted or whatever, just expelled. You don't get evicted. Either graduate or don't, okay.
We will address that at committee.
Take it up at committee. All right, so we got a motion and a second, Senate Committee. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Off to committee it goes. Next, we've got consider preparation of plans and specs and authorize bonus true to advertise for bids for the Cooley Road Mill and Overlay Project. I'd like to have Devin give us an update on where we are on the finances of all our summer construction projects. We talked about this last time.
Assuming everything goes according to plan, there'll be a savings of approximately seventy-five thousand dollars on Carmichael. The engineering, those things will be under. Eleventh Street Mill and Overlay, assuming that the bids that we got tonight is what we end up with, it's about eighteen thousand dollars. And the street maintenance project you approved last time, it's about eighty-six thousand dollars. So there are some savings there. My only caution is, that's what we know right now. And I did mention that to Chuck and Tom as well. You know, that's what we think's going to happen. And there's nothing preventing us from, you know, going forward with this project and getting the bids in. We always have sixty days and we should have a better handle then on where our costs are, but, so at this point, it appears there'll be some savings that you could, because we only budgeted ninety-four thousand for Cooley Road. That was what was in the budget. And this is slightly higher than that, so.
The eighty-six thousand savings was in, you said, street maintenance?
That was for the street maintenance, the ones we approved last time.
Okay.
And again, that's an estimate with engineering. I mean, that's what we're guessing.
I have a question for Tom. If we don't do this this year, how much, how much worse will the road be next year? I mean, is it right on the edge of, right on the edge of having, needing a lot of work done, or do we have another couple of years in it?
Yeah, it's, it's a, a road that gets utilized very much, it's a lot of traffic on Cooley Road. It is going downhill pretty fast. I would certainly recommend it if we can, and Devin had some great points that we don't want to go over, and that's kind of why we are holding off a little bit. Now it appears that some of the prices were a little bit lower than we anticipated and if possible, I would recommend that we consider it for this year.
I mean, we're a month out from when these bids will be back. By then, Carmichael should pretty well be tied up and we'll know where we're at, so we would have more definitive answer how much they're hurting. You know, because if it does come in at seventy-five thousand savings, that'll cover the difference between what we budgeted and what they're estimating.
And it's a street that needs to be done. Something else to consider, though, we still have carryover from last year on County Road F, down by the new school. We had to do a portion of, from Cooley Trail toward the dog track, and I think that's thirty-two thousand.
And that of that is thirty-two thousand.
Then we had a chance for two other projects. One would be, this year, the town of Troy is going to seal coat their half of Tower Road. And if we would care to do our half of Tower Road, it's estimated to be about nine thousand dollars. We, I was also approached by St. Croix County, they're going to do some roadwork on Bear Drive, which used to be County Road A. They asked us if we'd like to extend from where they stop to, for instance, up to St. Croix Street to finish that whole stretch. And that's estimated about thirty thousand. We don't have to do it, it's just something that, maybe it's something we should look at if we have funds available at that time.
I'll move for approval on staff recommendation on this.
Second. Could I ask that you amend your motion to hold bonus true to a cap of five thousand dollars in engineering costs to help staff prepare the bids?
Sure.
Thanks. Is that okay with the second here?
Absolutely.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the staff recommendation with stipulation that the engineering be held to no more than five thousand dollars on, on this. And the idea there is that Tom's going to do a lot of the work himself. It won't quite be an in-house job, but kind of a blend of the two with, with Chuck supervising him to a degree, in an effort to save some money. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That's good. It'd be good to get that one done if we can.
I got questions, we're talking about road projects. North Hudson's doing thirty-five, and St. Croix County approached us about our from Vine to Maloo.
Yeah, Tom, you talked about that.
The thirty-five, Second Street, from Vine down to the Maloo, our section, has that been talked about? Can you address that, since North Hudson's doing theirs?
We applied for some federal stimulus money on, on that road and we got basically denied because it was considered a state highway and we couldn't get funding through that. I spoke with the people from the DOT in Eau Claire and they said that that project's slated for two thousand and seventeen.
They ain't going to make it.
We do have, we do get funding, it's called a shared highway. We're responsible for the highway from Cooley Road to the bridge. We get money from the state for repairs and whatever, and that goes in the general budget, but that's, it's in bad shape and the curb and gutter is, is bad there. That, that was overlaid and, and that's a long time to wait, I don't know.
I'm glad you mentioned it. I had somebody ask the last week, they said coming across there with bicycles or walking or anything else is just dangerous.
Mm-hmm.
So we might want to take it up in safety.
Wow, it's a, it's a.
It's a safety hazard at that.
It's a difficult.
Did North Hudson plan differently for that, or is the county doing that, or what?
North.
State?
North Hudson got notified that it had come to the top of the list and, and hadn't completely pre-planned for that, and they had to adjust their budget around a little bit, because when it happens, it isn't all paid for by the state, obviously. You've got to come up with a lot of money. In our case, one of the things that we'd like to do is get a larger interconnection between North Hudson and Hudson, which would, for water flow, for water flow. We've got an undersized connection between the two municipalities there, and that's, that's one thing. Not entirely, but there's, there's pipe work to be done under the northern section of Second Street, I believe, isn't, wouldn't there be, Tom? Yeah. Well, okay, let's move on. Anything further on road work? That's as wide as I can expand that loophole then.
Why?
Communications and items for future agendas, any alderperson? City attorney? City administrator?
Couple quick updates. We have started working on the budget. The department has to be getting their worksheets hopefully by the end of the week. been getting their worksheets hopefully by the end of the week. Got a good leg up on it. And the other thing is, we did reach a tentative agreement with the Teamster Unions and they will be voting on it, I believe, this week. So, you will likely see that on your next agenda for approval.
Devin, did we get a public safety building report?
That is, we just found, the draft just is finalized and I, there probably will be at the next meeting as well.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? More adjourned. Thanks for coming.